Okay, we'll call this me and Doris, please rise for special allegiance.
Any indication following?
My allegiance to reply, the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the US law, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens, amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Ellen, here, Green, here, before.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Rindell.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. We'd like to start this off with thanking the Historical Society for hosting us again tonight. Do we know how many years this has been now that we've been here on Good Old Days Week?
It's been a while, but we're glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is our fifth year.
Yeah, fifth year, okay. It's a little cooler this year than it was last year. I don't know if that's good or bad. It's good for tonight. I'm not sure what it's going to do for the rest of the weekend. But Christine, thank you to your organization for hosting us again here. We appreciate it. Approval of minutes for the City Council meeting of August 21st would be in order.
Motion.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Move on to audience comments on anything that is not on the agenda. Anybody like to address the City Council, now would be the time? Nobody? We will move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the agenda as presented, be in order?
Motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is in support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have four this evening. The first one is consideration of Chamber of Commerce requests for the fall decorating. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider the request from the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce for their fall decorating event. This is the eighth year that the Chamber and city have worked together to decorate the light poles within our downtown and commercial districts. This will be the fifth year that the Chamber of Commerce holds a scarecrow decorating contest. Along with the decorating contest and, or scarecrow contest and fall decorations, they'll also be doing events through Fall Frenzy, which may include animal presentation, pumpkin decorating, music in the park, and a pet parade, costume pet parade. So, some of those things are still being worked out with the Chamber, but the fall decorating and the scarecrow contest are the same as what's been presented in past years. Last year, administration and the Chamber worked to have the scarecrows taken down, and we'll continue to work together on that. And then DPW also assists when they put out the hay bales.
Jill, do you have anything you want to add to this?
No, we are just asking if we can get some assistance from the DPW when putting the items out. We don't necessarily need them, taking items down. The only issue, it's not an issue, but it's just that a lot of the flower pots are on the same side. Scarecrows, when we originally started doing this, were designed to face oncoming traffic, so the flower pots, we're going to have to move, have to help moving some of them out. Whatever the opposite side of the pole is, to what side of the street they're on.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that in the last couple of weeks.
Certainly, in October, the flower pots may have kind of come to an end, and if not, if DPW's out there assisting with placing the hay bales, they can certainly be the ones to move them around to the other side of the poles. So, either way, I think it'll work. Again, we were just going to leave them out there as long as they look good, but knowing falls in Michigan, you know, it'll be kind of iffy if they are still out there.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce for fall decorating contest with the placement of scarecrows at light poles from Park Street to Gresham Avenue from October 7th to November 6th, 2017.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
Thank you, my thanks, for and the DPW for the timely manner of the cleanup last year. It was noted and appreciated.
Anything else? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you. Item number two is consideration of Richmond area Historical and Genealogical Society request for the cemetery walk. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider a request from RAGS to conduct a living history cemetery walk in the city of Richmond Cemetery on Saturday, October 14th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. The walk would be a fundraiser for RAGS, and they'll have members of both RAGS and the community theater kind of giving out the life history of some of Richmond's early pioneers. The event will start at the chapel with registration there, and then people coming will, there'll be a sign, kind of like one of the lawn signs right at the main entrance, having them turn there, and then turn right along that back road. Much like the Memorial Day Parade, people will park along the road, roadway, and then, once they register, every half hour, groups will leave the chapel and start the walk kind of in groups from there. And then, there'll also be one, at least one side by side that will be there to help take people that may not be able to make that walk all the way on their own power. And that, we've talked to Christine and the other members of RAGS that that does need to stay on the roadways, not to drive through the cemetery, over graves or anything like that. But, other than that, administration's comfortable with what they're requesting.
Christine, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just thought it's, we have it from 1 until 3. We don't know how many tickets we're going to sell. Hopefully, we're selling them in advance. If we sell tickets for a group, we'll start at 3, then the event won't be over until 3:45 or almost 4:00. But, that's another thing I have to add. It's been, we've been thinking about this for many years, and it's just putting it together. And this year, we had a couple people who are really good to do it, so we've got it together now. People are looking forward to it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposal from RAGS to conduct a living history cemetery walk in the city of Richmond Cemetery on Saturday, October 14th, 2017, from 1:00 p.m. to approximately 3:00 p.m., and the use of the chapel for registration. Support.
Okay, motion in favor, data is supported. Note the approximate 3:00 p.m., which covers the concern that we heard from the President of the Society. Any comments? Any other audience comments?
There is no rain date, so it'll go on where you're showing.
Okay, alrighty. Anything else, council? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Good luck. Item number three, consideration of fire grant proposal. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider a grant writing proposal that the fire department in the city received from Barb Green. She's helped several local fire departments submit grant applications for the FEMA assistance to firefighter grants. We've been kind of emailing back and forth with her, with myself and Chief Grant, and then also, we've talked to her on the phone. The grant proposal, grant writing proposal, kind of covers a number of options. One is for kind of resubmital of a existing grant that was previously submitted, also a cost for a completely new grant going in. And then, both the Chief and I have talked to her about, you know, kind of the primary goal of the city being submitting for some type of truck that would replace the ladder truck, and then also, kind of having her take a look at our department and see if there's other, you know, secondary grants or mini-grants that should be submitted at the same time. And, so I didn't put a exact dollar amount in the motion, but kind of that will evolve based on our meetings with her on what we feel is in the best interest of the city. Obviously, we're looking at using this grant to potentially replace the ladder truck that was taken out of service due to the accident. Chief Garrett apologizes. He's out of town, or I believe out of the state, for work tonight. He intended to be here, but both he and I have talked to this Barb. He's talked to other departments that have used her, and feels very comfortable with her proposal. We have submitted previously two grants for the ladder truck, and so we have a pretty good idea of what we want. He is also going to be forming a team within the department based on if this proposal's approved tonight, to kind of fine tune that truck.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve the proposal from Barb Green to assist the city in writing a FEMA assistance to fighters grant. Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion?
We don't need like a not to exceed amount, or just kind of leave it open ended.
I would do it based on the items that she's presented.
The proposal.
I believe that it's more than likely going to be in the $2,000 to $4,000 range, depending on whether we go for one or two grants, or even possibly a mini-grant.
Want to, you can add on to the motion.
No, as long as we have proven the proposal within the options, it's open-ended, and see what the needs are going to be the best, so.
Okay, motion's been made and supported, so any other discussions?
I just wanted to note that in the letter that was in the packet from Ms. Green, she mentions that you can possibly write off your grant writing fees. So, that's another good thing to remember.
Yeah, in our discussions with her, she's been very successful, so she's got some good background, so it looks good. I mean, definitely a way to go for the city, I believe.
Anything else? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, discussion on DPW masonry wall. Mr. City Manager?
Administration wanted to have a discussion with council tonight. We recently opened the bids for the masonry wall that we had talked about during a roundtable meeting and also budget workshops that would kind of go around three, the majority of three sides of the DPW yard. During our discussions at the budget and workshop meetings, we talked about having kind of a split-faced block masonry wall. During the bidding process, kind of late in the process, we did learn of some alternative materials that administration felt that at least looked good and may be a significant savings to the city. One of the things, the concerns we have, whether they meet kind of the aesthetic looks that the council and administration talked about during our workshop and budget meetings. The masonry wall bids came in roughly $118,000 and some change, depending on which type of cap we would want. The kind of prefab concrete walls would be anywhere, depending on the style, we would go with anywhere from probably half that cost to two-thirds of that cost. So, it's a significant savings, and so with that, we felt at least we would bring it and talk about that possibility. Certainly, if council's more comfortable with the traditional wall, we can, we'll bring this item back regardless, either to award the bids to the masonry wall, or to reject those bids and rebid it with the alternative material. But, we wanted to get, have this little discussion tonight. In your packet was one manufacturer, their brochure, and then Jim took some photos, and that's what was laid on the table tonight. I apologize, we've been kind of working on this right up to the meeting. And so, this is the material that's in your packet. And then also, another manufacturer is the brochure that looks like this at the start. The one that's in your packet probably is close to half the cost of the masonry wall. This one that I laid on the table tonight's probably about two-thirds of the cost. Did you say two-thirds, Jim? And so, you know, we just wanted to kind of see if that's even an option for us. Again, it's more, I think council had some concerns with the DPW not being very good neighbors and wanting to have it look a little better and presentable to the single-family homes in the back, especially if we moved the salt bin to the back. So, with that, I'll turn it over to council. Both myself and Jim Gutzinger are here tonight if you have any questions.
Well, yeah, a whole lot of questions, I think. I would think that the material that we would pick out, is that very in price largely, or not?
As far as the option, you mean?
Yes. Or is that just one in a different color? Is that?
There's a few stainer colors, and so if you were to pick a custom color, it would be a little more.
Is the design of the wall exactly the same, no matter, I mean, you've got all these pictures in here.
There's like three different designs.
There is.
At least from that manufacturer there.
Yeah, one of the walls, that wall's been out for 13 years.
Yeah, you can see this.
Yeah, so I took pictures to show its actual condition.
Yeah.
And I did a little bit of that wall. Just real quick, during budgets, I did receive estimates of two contractors for the split-face wall. One was $90,000, one was $115,000, so I kind of hedged my bets and been optimistic and went a little lower in the budget. But, the price of the wall is comparable. It's where, I guess it should have been. So, we're not bringing this to you because it's a lot higher than the estimate. It's more even at $100,000, that's just a lot of money. I did research, try to find other options. Obviously, I was in the wrong spot, talking to wrong people, could just didn't show itself and silver, and we did. So, I did receive a call from a fencing contractor, a company really that makes that Duracrete wall, and they asked if that would be approved altogether. And I said, no, we were prepared to approve it before the bid, but I encouraged him to submit a quote if he will, and he did. And it's fair amount less, and then during this sentence, then we lost the possibility of all of that. That one wall that I took pictures of, it's like a slat. It's almost like cores, if you will, stacking down each other. The other option, that's a little more costly, is a six-foot by 12-foot panel. It's similar construction, where it kind of slides on the, in the column.
That one there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that's titled "Vertecrete," right in the upper right-hand corner in the front, that's the one that's the solid panel. The Duracrete that's in your packet is the slats that slide in and lock in together.
The, in that Vertecrete, I believe there's a picture from Big Mam that Johnny printed out for you. That's from a site named Raloka, has that wall. It's not stained. It's really very similar to what would be available for us, because based on the size of the wall, I believe that, that option is only an option as far as the design for that panel.
Okay.
Which is nice looking. I haven't physically opened it yet, I certainly don't know how it's going to look.
Is there any way to get like a sample block of it?
I could ask, I'm sure they would arrange that.
I have one more question. The cap one, is there, did anybody give us this wall quote?
Yes. If you look at your packet, the base bid was for that top one, and that's the $118,950. The alternate bid for the blue cap is the $18,300, $118,000.
Well, what I, no, what I'm asking, not the cap, but the wall itself, that texture wall is different than this.
Correct. That's what you see in your packet, that packet, that picture that you're looking at.
Yep.
That's the traditional masonry block.
That's what we're calling traditional.
Yep. That's what we talked about during the budget process and put out for bid.
Okay.
That's the one that's $118,000.
This is the 118,000?
Yep.
Okay, because that's.
On the base bid.
This base. Yeah.
And then this one is?
It's not quite the same, and that's why we're bringing it. If you don't like the look of that one, it's cheaper.
Of the traditional one, this one, or then this.
Or that one.
So, we're getting three options then?
If we don't want to award the bid for the traditional block wall, we're asking tonight, and just having a general discussion, for the cost difference, is that something you would be willing to accept aesthetically? Because it's not the same.
Okay.
But it is, we believe, going to be cheaper if we went with that.
This is cheaper?
Correct.
Even this fancy pants one?
Yes.
Really?
Two-thirds. So, what's cheaper about it? You get what you pay for. Yeah, the cheapest option, the Duracrete for the slats. I did have some concerns, so I'd have to, we'd have to weigh it a little more. Can we build, how long will that wall last? The one that's up there now has been 13 years. It has some cracking in the posts where there's a reinforcement, I believe, just too close to the, to the surface. I did ask if we changed the design, and they said, no. So, to me, that's a concern. But it's lasted 13 years. In the right, if we took care of it, I'm sure that'll last quite a bit longer. How long will a masonry wall last? That's the difference in cost, lifecycle costs that we're going to have to weigh.
Well, in a masonry wall, I mean, don't they basically last forever if properly installed?
It's maintain, yeah, certain objects that could last 60 years, could last 100 years.
Yeah. Where this wall that has been brought to us tonight, do we have any idea, how long have they been out and about?
That one, oh, that, the product itself.
Yeah.
I believe you said almost 30 years.
Almost 30 years.
They've been building these, that physical wall that I took the picture of, which is
13.
nearing the wall, 13 years. Is that a corollary? It was a, it was a very long wall, much longer than this. And there was two, only two panels that were damaged. All and all, most of the fence posts had that cracking in the post itself.
Mm-hmm.
But all things considered, it's lasted quite long, considering the length, not a surprise how much damage there was. So, that's us.
Isn't this the wall at Ford Motor Company by, by Greenfield Village? I don't know if you walked, driven down Greenfield, Mike?
It looks like it, but I don't know.
There's a picture of that same wall, but in grave in the back, the one that's in.
Yeah, it looks just like the one that Ford Motor Company installed like 12 years ago.
That would be an alternative, those colors, right?
That's the, that's at the Consumers Energy facility in rural, that, that wall there in that picture. And that's the stain, that's not dyed, which is what the quote that they provided you with the budget number, is that well, this isn't dyed out. Essentially, you can stain it if you want, different colors like everyone wants. And I don't know if that means you have to maintain that.
I think that would be the color.
Yeah, that's even kind of bovines, whatever option you want, it's bovines.
Yeah, I think there's quite a bit of difference, I think, from this wall to this wall.
Yeah.
That one looks a lot better.
Jim, do you know how long ago that was?
I didn't, I didn't ask yet. After tonight, I'll go take a look at it, take some pictures, and ask how long. Glad I've physically seen that one. You can really tell better personally than a picture certain.
Remember, right in the budget meeting, I think we talked about, to find out any type of wall, I think we talked about the walls that toy products that they had, and all those type of things. I don't think anybody was opposed to it. I think the best alternative we came up with at the time was the block wall. But now that he's found this, I mean, I'm not opposed to looking further into this. Is, I mean, we're not starting the wall this fall.
No, realistically.
Okay. And, you know, for the price difference, but again, I agree, the quality has to be there. Just seeing the pictures of 13 years, I wouldn't be in favor of that wall at this point. But I don't know anything about these walls either, so. I do think building this town, where they cut a lot of corners, as we well know, especially our city hall, and we have paid through the nose for it as long as I've been on council. That's why I asked about the brick wall. Brick wall built properly and on the right foundation is going to be there forever, normally. I'm not sure that a product that's been out for 30 years, one that we have a picture of after 13 years looks like that. That's not what I want in the neighborhood. The brick goes along with our city hall. You know, we're looking at that DPW, and we're going to have to do something there before too long. And, I don't know, I tend to, you know, money's definitely an issue. There's no doubt about that. But if something's going to last, and it's proven to last, sometimes you're better off paying a little more upfront to get that long-term value versus getting something that may be a little cheaper. I can't imagine that this wall, where it's, it looks like it's putting posts into the ground, and rather than putting a foundation down and building on top of foundation, is there any kind of a foundation that goes with this?
On, that's the solid panel wall, it's a, it's a caged footing that's set to an elevation, and then the panels sit on that footing, you know, it sets to the right elevation, so the panels sit on each end. Essentially, that's what it's sitting on.
Okay. Okay, so is that 48 inches down? I'm not quite sure I understand.
Yeah, they actually go a little deeper than 48 inches.
Do they? Okay.
I believe it's a 24-inch diameter with a cage.
That's just at the.
I don't even know, what do you mean cage?
Sorry, a rebar.
Oh, rebar, okay, okay.
But is that 48 inches adjusted, the post, that's not underneath the panels?
Yeah, correct. It's just at the posts, that. The posts essentially have the rubber footing.
Then in between the posts.
Just earth.
Earth, so there would not be a foundation under the panels.
That's what you're talking about, yeah.
Kind of bothers me.
Yeah, and I think it'd be a concern also, you know, if you're going to possibly put in material. I know you don't plan on putting material, but you know, 20 years down the road, things change, and ideas change, and all of a sudden, you're stacked material against that wall.
Yeah.
Is that wall going to withstand pressure like a block wall?
Well, we're concerned about that really, in all cases. We're intent not to stack anything against, directly against it, or push against the masonry wall either, because it's really not designed for that. We've got little things, but nothing bad.
So, the wall that we had talked about, toy product, you know, for lack of any other wall that we know of, that is not the thick wall that we see that quite often is used on the expressways when there's, like, they're dividing walls. That's not what they have there?
That's not exactly the same. It's different. Are you talking about the, those large blocks that we discussed previously?
Yeah, yeah.
Those, there are different styles. No, those are not that. Those aren't very walls not intended to be stacked.
Okay.
It's a, kind of comes up on an 8-inch wide top line.
Okay. We did look into, there's some of those that are made individually.
Yeah.
That was even more expensive than the traditional masonry.
Okay, that was my question. Where, yeah, okay.
Yeah, high-end blocks, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And the one we were looking at. Toys is a combination of that, but the area that you see kind of right across from city hall is the traditional split-face block masonry wall.
Okay.
And then down further to the west, they transition into those bigger, kind of Jersey Wall-type roadside barricades, but the decorative ones of those are even more expensive than the traditional masonry wall.
Okay.
Some, just since it's a conversation, some of the ones on the freeway, I'm thinking like around Rochester, when I, because I watched them being installed, they had this, where they had the pillars, and then they slid down the cement.
This is, this is.
Okay.
Both of those options are actually sound walls. Both, both of those options are actually sound, sound walls on the freeway.
Okay.
And, and both options are strictly to go much higher, I mean, we're only looking for sixty, maybe a twenty feet out, they can go that.
So Mr. Mayor, I have a question about the Vertacrete one. Is this like similar to a stamped concrete, or how does the color get there and does it fade? I know it says this company's been, been doing this since nineteen oh six, quality precast products since nineteen oh six. Just wonder if we would have some actual, I know we have the one from Royal Oak.
This is.
Yeah.
Yeah, he got like the same ornament, no color.
Right.
The wood color, it would be essentially hand color, hand stained.
Okay, so we just want a solid, like the one on the front, I think, it looks like it would be probably more expensive than the one that they're showing in Royal Oak.
Yeah, right, yes, yes.
Which is, yeah.
Because that one's hand stained.
Yeah, exactly, so, okay. So would they have examples of, since they've been around since nineteen oh six, like ones that have been around for a number of years?
I had asked what they had local and row local, one of these local that they could get me. Because that's company, I spoke to that, you know, high, the closest manufacturer.
It doesn't necessarily mean they were building wall panels for, since nineteen oh six.
Oh, yeah.
Just cement products, culverts, culverts more than likely, drains, drain pipe.
It says precast, so whenever, I guess I could mean multiple ones.
Yeah, precast was the old style drain.
As far as thickness, I haven't gotten into the details for the Vertacrete, but is it as thick as the masonry?
No, I don't believe so.
I'm just thinking if somebody smashed into it and then having to replace it.
The masonry wall is like an eight inch wide block, and I probably didn't look at it myself. It's five inches thicker.
Five inches versus eight, okay.
Again, it was just the cost thing, and we wanted deeper also.
So with that, like with weather, you know, with the weather, like in winter, going to summer and freezing, would these panel walls maybe be better accessible to that, where they could actually move with the?
I don't believe so, because they're still sitting on solid foundation, that's below the frost line, so I don't know.
All right. Because I wouldn't want it to start popping up and then have uneven walls. Looks like we got a different, versus this.
Well, if it's not going to be a fall project, then I would recommend that we get more information, if we can get our hands on and actually see a panel, it doesn't have to be a four by eight panel, but just give us a piece of the panel versus, you know, what we're talking about, that might be the way for us to go, there's no hurry now. Can we keep those, are those bids only good for thirty days usually, from the?
No, I don't know if it's thirty or sixty.
Okay.
And they only do thirty days.
We'll certainly do a little more research on this particular product for the, I think this was maybe a consensus that this was a little nicer than, than that one.
Yeah.
And see if we can get a sample of this for the next meeting. If it's a thirty day bid, we'll have it at the next meeting. If it's a sixty day, we'll, we'll push that off and get a little bit more research in here, if this is kind of a, still somewhat acceptable aesthetic look.
Mm-hmm. And it, can we find out where location?
Locations and some duration, age of.
I would like to go see it firstly, just to see what it really is.
Mr. Mayor, would this maybe be a better topic to bring up again at the quarterly workshop that we're probably going to have in October? Or do we have to?
We'll probably be studying it next week, it all depends on how good these bids are. We did meet with also our engineer Ken Kingsley and talked about the bid prices that we got. We've been kind of kicking around on, you know, do we reject these bids, bid it again in the winter for a spring project, thinking you're going to get better bids? We don't believe, so we actually think if you're going to go with the masonry wall, the bids that we received are probably going to be the best you're going to get.
Okay.
And concrete prices and stuff, we, we believe may be going up this winter again. So we'll take a look at when the bids are good through, whether it was thirty or sixty, and then you'll have something in your next packet letting you know on that.
So based on that, in other words, if we did award the bid, were they going to start more than likely immediately?
The bid, they, once they started, they had to finish. The way the bid was written, once, once we realized there were some other factors over there of some potential utility poles that may need to be moved.
Yeah.
Things like that. They had the option of either constructing it this fall or constructing it next spring. If they started in the fall, they had to finish it this fall.
Okay.
Or they had the option of waiting and starting it in the spring. Either way, these prices that they bid are good.
Yeah, I did speak with the masonry contractor, the intent more likely would be to order materials this fall, so they can hold their prices and potentially store in our yard to be, to be able to build it this spring.
Okay. So the whole idea behind this was not only to clean up, but also the fact that we wanted a sound barrier, because we're going to be moving the salt barn.
Correct.
When was the salt barn going to be done? After this season or before?
Based on the funding, certainly not before the wall was built, the perimeter fencing, it would be in the spring when we tend to do that as well, so.
Okay.
We have plenty of time, we're not under a time crunch for the sake of that.
Okay, so the salt barn is going to be adjacent to this wall?
It'd be, yeah, essentially in the northwest corner right here.
Okay.
Just where this wall would go.
Okay. But you're actually going to have a different block, are you not? I mean, you're not going to be storing salt up against this.
No, it'd be a Ford, we're proposing Ford concrete wall.
Okay, with a wood building or?
And then wood on top of that, wood above the salt, I am saying.
Okay, so it's going to be block on the bottom then?
It'd be a Ford concrete, nine foot up, and then a wooden knee wall, as you will, above that to, for the roof.
Okay, okay.
And that's optimistic of giving us twenty-five percent national funds, and we do that formally, told us that in a budget in the second of October, so they can't fill that.
Okay.
So the ten will be the bid this winter, sometime next spring.
Okay. Okay. Yep.
With your, your rationale.
Money aside, what wall, I mean, is masonry wall?
If the price is recall, the masonry wall, to me, would be the one, but this is a tough pill to swallow, I'm going to be thorough, not, not bring to your attention how we do about it.
Right.
But in my opinion, from what I've seen so far, the masonry wall is the best product, and that's why it costs the most.
But then, and that gets back to what the mayor's saying too, you know, we want something quality that's going to last for a long time. We don't know if these other walls are going to last twenty years, thirty years, or will we take care of a masonry wall that's going to last basically a lifetime.
Yeah.
At least our lifetime, anyway, so.
Well, the other thing, excuse me Jim, but the other thing on that is, are we going to stay there? Can we physically stay in that square that we have over there? Is the, you know, we're going to grow, the town, the area's going to grow, whether or not the city itself grows depends on a lot of different factors, but, you know, are we going to have to have larger barns for, for bigger equipment, or are we going to have smaller barns because new equipment someday is going to be smaller and, like the Quint, it's going to handle five different jobs if we were ever to get a Quint. That's going, that could eliminate possibly two trucks. So we could stay in the hall we're in, we don't have to look for other property. Who knows what's going to happen with DPW equipment? One truck might be able to handle two trucks in the future because of things they may come up with to melt snow, you know, who knows? But what I'm wondering is if we're going to, if, again, we're looking at half the price possibly of, of the, the wall that we had originally proposed, do we, do we think we're going to be there for a lifetime, I guess? You know, is that facility going to be able to handle us?
And, and certainly, there's always kind of variables down the road that you can't foresee, but at our discussion at the quarterly roundtable, part of moving the salt bin and installing this wall was the idea that looking at the other parcel we had as a potential DPW site, staying in our existing location and better utilizing the property we have would allow us to stay there for really the foreseeable future, you know? Right now, the back of the DPW, due to there not being a wall or soundproofing, limits the functionality of our DPW. By building this wall and moving the salt bin to the back, we really open up a lot of space and are able to stay in that location, we believe.
So is council a consensus that we want some more information to come back on this, the other two options maybe that you have there and?
As long as we don't lose these bid prices, because that's going to be our best, you know, money for us.
Actually, we could lose.
Right.
Certainly, if, if there's that tension, we'll have some type of action at our next meeting.
Don't want to make a hasty decision on something we've just seen and get, but, what you're saying, those numbers are our best numbers, it's, I think we, we have to put our foot to the ground and get it done to lock in those numbers.
Again, the base bid that you have here is with a stone cap?
Correct.
And what is this other one? Is that a steel cap?
Uh, yep.
Aluminum or?
In your packet on this item, if you look, essentially the last page of your packet, the picture on the top.
Yeah.
Is the masonry cap.
Mm-hmm.
The alternate bid is this cap down here.
Do we know what the material is, is my question?
It is aluminum.
Aluminum possibly? Okay. And?
The, I mean, the places, in this case, the low bids were basically identical.
Yeah.
Masonry, the, it's, it's not really precast concrete, but it's very similar, that cap, it's a four foot long section, so aesthetically, we believe that's nicer. The aluminum originally tested, that would be cheaper, that's why that was listed as an alternate.
Okay.
Didn't quite pan out that way, but that, but that cap would be low maintenance as well.
And that was the ultimate, but the aluminum cap was a few hundred dollars cheaper than the low bid for that was, a few hundred dollars cheaper.
Yeah, sorry, I missed what we thought that there'd be.
Significant.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anything else, council? Anything from the audience? Back to the table? John, you got enough information?
Uh, enough, yep, yep.
You sure you don't want to talk, talk about it anymore?
No, no.
We have enough work to do now.
That's what you get when you put stuff on the table.
I don't know.
We don't have time to.
Absolutely.
Lessons to be learned here.
We knew it was coming.
Okay. We move on to city manager's comments, sir.
I have nothing tonight other than to wish the festival good luck this weekend and look forward to a great weekend.
Thank you for all your help. Your administrative team and all the employees, it's, they've made it again very, very easy for the Good Old Days Committee to bring everything together again. We really appreciate the support from the city. Okay, council comments? Dennis? Jamie?
Nothing, sir. Nothing, thank you.
Nothing. I'm good, I concur.
Quickly on the calendar, of course, this weekend is the Richmond Good Old Days, the fifty-fourth annual. We hope everybody comes out and has a good time. A week from, well, I'm sorry, the, today is Tuesday the fifth, so a week from yesterday will be the library board meeting at seven o'clock at the library, that's on the eleventh. The library Paris program will be on the thirteenth at three o'clock. The planning commission will be meeting on the fourteenth at seven o'clock at city hall. And we have the Romeo to Richmond race will be on the seventeenth, that will be starting at our Rails to Trail there at, is it?
Ten o'clock.
The half marathon starts at nine.
Nine?
Over at Romeo. We, they, they, they get on the buses at the, at the high school bus over there, I think that starts at nine, and I think the five K that starts there at the, at the Trailhead Park starts at nine forty-five.
Is that what it is?
I believe it's, they start that, the same people, the timers and everything that start over there, they race back to, to the Trailhead and start the five K, so I thought it was nine forty-five.
Okay, okay. So if you want to see a, a race and a fun time, be over at the Trailhead Park somewhere around nine fifteen.
Correct.
You should be able to see all the runners there that will be running the five K. And I, is there a one mile?
There is, this year, trying to encourage families to come out and participate in the event. They created a super fun mile. Participants in that will actually get a cape.
Yeah.
Have the option of either getting a T-shirt, or if you have kids running that one mile, they can get like a Superman cape, so.
Very good, very good. So it sounds like a fun time. And then on the eighteenth, two weeks from yesterday, the next regular scheduled city council meeting will be had. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar at this point in time? Me not? We move on to other businesses? Are there any other business to the city council this evening? Me not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion to adjourn, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Again, Christine, thank you very much.